Record of the meeting number 14 will not come to order. We please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Dorans, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is pleased to welcome back Elder Janet Kimball Smith, Senior Pastor at Chidstone Baptist Church. Welcome back to council.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come first and foremost on today thanking you for this day. God, then we thank you for the privilege of prayer. God, your word says that we are to pray for those in authority. So we don't just pray for those in this room, God, but we pray for the governor and those that work with him. We pray for our mayor and those that work with him. We pray for the state representatives. We pray for the fire department. And we pray for our police officers. And we pray for our judges, God. And then we pray for those who make up the city council, for this great city of Columbus in which we live. We pray, oh God, as decisions are made, that they are made, God, in unity and that they are made in love. And then even when there's disagreements, because we don't always agree, we pray that they're worked out, God, in the spirit of unity. We thank you, God, for this place. We thank you for everyone in this room, God. And we thank you, God, as decisions are made regarding where we live, God, and our places of employment, our schools, our children, as decisions are made, that they are made fairly and they are made in love with togetherness. So we thank you. As we continue on in this meeting, we pray, oh God, that you would just allow this meeting to go according to your works, that we all may be blessed in this great city of Columbus. We thank you now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I just would like to make note that as we cap out Women's History Month, Pastor Smith was our fourth woman pastor who prayed over this council this month. And so, thank you so much for your leadership in the faith. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
No, at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? We'll start with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any resolutions this evening, but I would like to invite President of the NAACP, the local chapter, Nana Watson, Pastor Joel King, the Reverend Tyrone Laws, who's the president of Baptist Ministry Alliance, and Elder Larry Price to this podium, please.
Good evening. Good evening. That's better. King said, "Y'all scared?" No, we're here on a good note. Some months ago, maybe almost a year, we came before you because there was an incident concerning the police department that we were not happy with, and we shared that with you. Today, we come on a good note because there's another incident. And so, we want to say to you, thank you to President Harden, to those city councilmen. I will read the resolution, and then I will have Nana Watson, President of the NAACP, make some comments. President Laws of the Baptist Ministry Alliance make some comments. And then Reverend King, on behalf of the Baptist Pastors Conference, we are united on this resolution. And it reads as follows. And if I mess up the officer's name, I didn't mean to. But we start with something that they take a commitment to, and I'm going to read it to you, every officer that's sworn in. And it says, "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Columbus, and the rules and regulations of the Department of Public Safety, the Division of Police, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the officer, the police officer, Division of Police, Department of Public Safety, City of Columbus, Columbus, Ohio, to which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my ability." I read that because we take it serious, and we hope that they take it serious when they take that pledge. Now, on behalf of the Baptist Ministry Alliance, whereas the members of the Baptist Ministry Alliance of Columbus and Vicinity and the NAACP and the pastors conference commend Columbus City Mayor Ginther, Public Safety Director Pettis, Columbus City Division of Police Deputy Chief Quillan, and Columbus City Police Department and officers Linda Gutierrez, and I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and Wendell Tobert. Whereas on March 7, 2019, Officer Linda Gutierrez and Officer Wendell Tobert defused a difficult and life-threatening situation. The members of the Baptist Ministry Alliance of Columbus and Vicinity commend both officers, Gutierrez and Tobert, for their actions while serving the public, for their quick resolve, assessment, and behavior, by the way, as captured on police video camera. Therefore, we, the members of the Baptist Ministry Alliance of Columbus and Vicinity and the NAACP and the Columbus Baptist Pastors Conference, want Officer Linda Gutierrez and Officer Wendell Tobert to know that we are proud, supportive, and appreciative for their service to the Columbus community. Be it resolved, we, the members of the faith-based community, acknowledge you, your fellow officers, and the dedicated service you provide to the citizens of Columbus, Ohio. We consider your faithful discharge of duty noteworthy and honorable. Thank you. Humbly submitted on the 25th day of March in the year of our Lord 2019 by the officers and members of the Baptist Ministry Alliance of Columbus and Vicinity, President Reverend Tyrone Laws, the NAACP, President Nana Watson, and President Lamar of the Baptist Pastors Conference, sign ye this day. And now, I'm going to ask for words from our President of the NAACP, Nana Watson.
Thank you so much, Elder Price, President Harden, and members of council. As the Elder Price said, we come down here, we call you, we blow your phones up saying, "We don't like this. What's wrong with our police department? You've got to make it work." And we're not apologizing for that, but I'm sure we won't have to come back again. We are so happy that our video cameras worked. It was a body cameras worked, which was seen on video. So, we're just happy because we were strong proponents of that. So, body cameras do work in this city. And thank you. And we want to make sure that those officers know how much we appreciate them, and we salute them for their service on that horrible day. Thank you.
President Harden and council, to the members that are here, just want you to know that we, again, appreciate to see our officers conduct themselves in such a manner that shows that they care for the well-being of this city and the citizens of this city, and that they really desire to keep the peace. We're not only here, as was said, and I reiterate, to complain about when things are done where we feel is unfair or unjustly, but when things are done properly and right and just, we say kudos, appreciations, and congratulations. God bless you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Harden and council members. Again, we join with the NAACP, saying thank you to those two officers. Thank you for our new interim chief of police, who've already showed us that he's making some changes in the department by this act, by these two officers, that we can do and can arrest people without shooting them to death. We can manage them for taking the steps necessary, as officers all do, to do community policing, which they showed on that day. So, we came down and say, "Thank you. Thank you. Continue the good work, and hope you continue to go home safely, and we have a safer community in Columbus, Ohio." God bless.
President Harden, we'd like to present you with a copy of this resolution. Again, thank you.
President Harden, as the individuals leave, I think it's significant, the incident that they're referencing was on March 7, where a female police officer, Lieutenant Officer Linda Gutierrez, was confronted by someone and who continued to threaten her and offered to try and take her sidearm away from her. He was much larger than she is. And fortunately, she did not have to use lethal force. Her partner did arrive, Officer Wendell Tobert. They were able to use tasers, which this council provided to our police division, and was able to seduce the individual without the use of lethal force. And that's the comments that they're making, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I'll make sure that they get a copy of the resolution.
Thank you, councilmember. And certainly, thank you to Pastor Laws, to Reverend, and Price, to Dr. King, and to President Nana Watson, for your leadership. And certainly, thank you to our stellar police officers for de-escalating that situation. Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Harden. No resolutions this evening, just a few announcements. I will host two sessions for community hours this upcoming Tuesday and Thursday. The dates and times are as follows. Tuesday, March 26, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., we'll be located at the Milo Grogan Community Recreation Center. And then Thursday, we are scheduled to be at the Whitestone Branch Library in Clintonville. It was originally scheduled for 11:30 to 1:00. We will need to move those hours to 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. This evening, I have one guest presentation and two resolutions. I would like to invite Sharon Riggsby, Board of Elections trainer and trainer scheduler, along with Director of the Board of Elections, Ed Leonard, with the Franklin County Board of Elections, to the podium. Well, you can just come by yourself. As many of you may know, Franklin County received $10 million from the state of Ohio to purchase new voting machines. Some voters will see the new machines for the 2019 elections, and all voters will see them by the 2020 presidential election. In preparation, I have invited Sharon, the director, and her colleague, Richard Bookshaw, to council tonight to provide us with a brief presentation. Director, go ahead. It's all yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Council members, I just want to extend my thanks to you for the opportunity to present, for inviting us here. As you mentioned, Sharon Riggsby and Richard Bookshaw, they're outside, they're outside in the hallway with the actual equipment being available to give a demonstration to anybody here and also to our council members. And I believe President Harden and Councilmember Remy, you already took the opportunity to see the equipment. But we do thank you for this opportunity. As you mentioned, the first election in which many of voters will have the opportunity to see the equipment is the May 7 primary, and then obviously in the general election. But this equipment has been certified at both the federal level and the state level. At the federal level, it has to go through testing, essentially independent laboratories test the equipment to make sure that it works properly, that it's secure. We chose it, it's a hybrid system. We refer to it as a hybrid system because it gives the voter the option of voting either on a completely paper ballot, where you might have, if you're an absentee voter, where you fill in the oval on an optical scan sheet, and it places it through a scanner, or, like many of our voters are used to, it's a touchscreen system that it generates a paper ballot that then the voter can take to a scanner and scan it in. So, it is a hybrid system, but it's designed that way to give the voter the option of either paper or actually continuing to use a touchscreen machine that are a ballot marker that our voters are used to using. Some of the criteria that went into this election was obviously the ease of use for our voters, for our poll workers, and for those with disabilities. It was of particular interest to make sure that those who have disabilities, whether it's a visual impairment or a physical impairment, that that voter can actually use the equipment and cast their vote without someone's assistance. Because oftentimes, either the old system was very slow, or the voter would actually need assistance from somebody. And now, the voter will be able to cast their ballot without somebody assisting them in casting it, and that they can maintain the secrecy of their ballot. That the old system, or some of the other systems, I should say, out in the marketplace, would have the disabled voter cast their ballot, and then the machine would print a ballot, and everybody else was filling in their ballots by hand. A disabled voter might be filling their ballot, it would be machine-generated, so it would clearly look different than everybody else's. And in this case, disabled voters' vote will look just like anyone else's. And so, that was an important aspect of it. Another criteria we looked at was the security of the system. There are no components of our system that are connected to the internet. There's no internal modems to the equipment. There's no way that they can be hacked, because there's no avenue through which it can be hacked. The software that we use to program the election, the computers that we use to program the election are on their own separate network. The network's not connected to the internet. The network's not, they don't have email access, so that there isn't a way in which a virus can get into that system. And then, the other aspect of it is that, because it has a paper-based element to it, it can be audited. And we audit every election, so again, that's one of those benefits of this particular system. We want to encourage, obviously, those who are here in council chamber tonight to take advantage of the opportunity and see the equipment and, you know, get a chance to cast a vote on it and see how it works. But we also want to encourage you, to those who aren't in chamber and those who might still be with us, is to take the opportunity to view it on our website, to take an opportunity, we have a voting lab that we do on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Thursdays is during the day, and Tuesdays is during the day, and Thursdays is in the evening. But we have those hours that we can make available to voters to actually see the system in an actual, or in a mock voting location. And then finally, we welcome the opportunity to do these types of demonstrations to any organization. So, those who are here or those who are viewing this presentation, this council meeting, they can contact the Board of Elections, and we'd be happy to come out and make this type of presentation and give the opportunity to see the machines pretty much anywhere. We've been doing a lot of that already. On our website, there's a calendar of events where we are doing demonstrations. And again, we're always available to do demonstrations throughout Franklin County. And before I yield the floor, I do want to make a point, opportunity, to encourage those who are here, as well as the viewers, to become a poll worker. Again, one of the reasons we selected the system is we wanted to make it easy for our poll workers to set up, and it is much simpler for our poll workers to operate this new equipment. And it's not a volunteer gig. It is a paying opportunity. So, we want to encourage folks to, we give plenty of training, so that people who want to become poll workers will feel confident in setting up the equipment. But again, we encourage you to reach out to the Board of Elections and become a poll worker and be on that front line of democracy. So, with that, thank you very much, again, for the opportunity, and I encourage you to take a moment and check out the new equipment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Appreciate all your hard work. I know a lot of time and effort went into the selection of this vendor and certainly these new machines. It's relatively easy to use and certainly seems to be pretty foolproof. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for the Director? Congratulations, she said. Thank you so much. And like he said, if anyone would like to go out and take advantage of running through the new system, it takes about 60 seconds to complete it, so feel free to step out into the hallway and use the machines. Thanks, Director. May I proceed to my resolutions? Awesome. Thank you very much. I would now like to invite Alden Shepard and members of the Ohio State University Chapter of Defend Our Futures, and Trish Demeter, Vice President of Energy Policy with the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund, to the podium, as I introduce Resolution 0091X 2019 to urge that mercury and air-toxic standards under the administration of the United States Environmental Protection Agency be maintained at their current levels. Mercury is a highly potent neurotoxin that is most commonly dispersed into the air when burned by coal and oil-fired power plants. Once in the atmosphere, mercury can travel for extended periods of time before being deposited in water through precipitation, or microorganisms converted into its most toxic form, methylmercury, which can affect fetal and childhood neurological development. Increased risk of heart attacks and diabetes, as well as weakened immune functioning. The mercury and air-toxic standards were established in 2011 and were the first set of federal rules to limit hazardous chemicals such as mercury from coal-burning and oil-burning power plants. The Center for American Progress found that MATS reduced mercury emissions from power plants by 81% since going into effect. According to the agency's own projections, the EPA's own projections, MATS has saved over 17,000 lives per year in the United States. Since the implementation of MATS, seven of the highest polluting states successfully reduced mercury emissions by more than 2,000 pounds. On December 27, 2018, the EPA issued a proposed revised supplemental cost finding for the mercury and air-toxic standards. In its 2018 assessment, the EPA found the cost for the MATS program would range between $7.4 billion and $9.6 billion annually, and the benefits would range from $4 million to $6 million annually. The EPA found the benefits to be significantly less than the billions of dollars of benefits that were estimated in 2011, because the 2018 report did not include health benefits of limiting toxic chemical pollution in addition to reducing the toxic chemicals itself. The city of Columbus, its residents, and its environment will be well-served by maintaining and strengthening the MATS. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that we hereby urge the United States Environmental Protection Agency to maintain federal mercury and air-toxic standards in the regulation of coal and oil-burning power plants as currently set forth in the Clean Air Act. We encourage residents to take advantage of the public comment period. If you have Google, you can Google the public comments MATS, and it should pop up. The first selections would be the EPA, how to make a comment. I would give you the website, but it's extensively long. Our partners like AEP have made the investments to meet these standards. Should the administration ultimately decide to move forward with these rollbacks, we would urge our partners like AEP to maintain the current standards and join Columbus in protecting our environment. Alden, Trish, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. It is an honor to stand before the Columbus City Council members, as well as the citizens of Columbus. My name is Alden Shepard. I'm an intern at Defend Our Future at Ohio State. Defend Our Future is a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots climate action group operating under the Environmental Defense Fund. We are dedicated to empowering young people of all political persuasions who are interested in advancing climate change and clean energy solutions that grow our economy and protect the world for future generations. My fellow Defend Our Future interns, and I give our time to advocating climate reform because we are concerned with the current climate and environmental issues facing our nation and the effects that they are having on our community and the world. We speak for young people across the nation who are fed up with the irresponsible and consequential rulings coming out of Washington and refuse to allow the current administration to further dismantle essential climate regulations and continue to sweep environmental injustices under the rug. We're here today to ask the city of Columbus to assist Defend Our Future by supporting the mercury and air-toxic standards established in 2011 in accordance with the 1990 Clean Air Act, and to oppose the senseless rollback being proposed by the current administration. The mercury and air-toxic standards, or MATS for short, are limits set by the EPA for more than 80 hazardous pollutants like mercury, arsenic, and heavy metals that are emitted by coal and oil-burning power plants. MATS reduced the amount of hazardous pollution created as a byproduct of coal and oil-burning power plants by 81% nationally, 86% here in Ohio. Each year, it has been in place, it has prevented 130,000 asthma attacks, and resulted in 850,000 fewer sick days missed of work, with the total $90 billion in benefits from improved health. Ultimately, the pollution controls required by the mercury standards have saved 17,000 lives each year. And now, the federal government, in President Trump's recently released fiscal year 2020 budget, has called for a 31% decrease in the funding for the Environmental Protection Agency. If approved, the 31% budget cut will mean more pollution and serious threats to health. MATS has proven to be beneficial for the public health and the economy. If it is repealed, we will see respiratory diseases drastically increase disproportionately affecting pregnant women, infants and children, sick and elderly, and disadvantaged people who don't have access to clean water, air, or reliable health care. With such dire consequences, a rollback, for rollback's sake alone, must not be allowed to pass. Currently, residents can comment on the proposed revised mercury and air-toxic standards on the EPA comment submission page. The comment period for the proposed rule change ends on April 17. We, as concerned citizens, ask that the city of Columbus pass an official resolution in support of the mercury and air-toxic standards and in opposition to the senseless rollback while this comment period is still open, to spread awareness and to let the current administration know that we will not sit idly by and allow coal and oil-burning power plants to dump hazardous pollutants and toxins into the air we breathe and the water we drink. Cities like Philadelphia have already passed such resolutions, and it is our hope that Columbus causes a cascade of support as other cities follow in Columbus's footsteps. I was born and raised here in Columbus. I've seen what this city can do. I've seen what these people can do when they believe in something. So, please believe in us and help us defend the mercury and air-toxic standards. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I feel about this small, behind or in front of all these great, tremendous advocates from Defend Our Future, and thank you guys for doing all the work on this. I'm Trish Demeter. I'm the VP of Energy Policy for the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund and the OEC, Ohio Environmental Council, which is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And I come to speak in support of Councilman Remy's resolution urging the United States Environmental Protection Agency to maintain the mercury and air-toxic standards. These are critical standards in moving the United States forward in its transition to clean energy, away from polluting sources of energy, and to do our part to address the effort to address, do our part to address global climate change. Since its implementation under President Obama in 2011, the MATS rule has saved thousands of lives from airborne pollution. And what the Trump administration is proposing is essentially how they assess the cost and benefits of this rule on people's health, lost workdays, and future generations. And if they're successful in this change, we would be putting central Ohio residents at greater risk to their health. The Trump administration's chosen path on assessing the cost and benefits discounts the lives of Ohioans in what we're doing each and every day to protect ourselves. And the Trump administration's chosen path appears to put fossil fuel interests ahead of children and adults with asthma, and pregnant women who are especially vulnerable to mercury pollution. According to the American Lung Association, over 100,000 Columbus residents suffer from asthma, and of which about 20,000 of them are children. The Trump administration's approach greatly underestimates the benefits that this rule brings to Ohioans and our own neighbors. Nationally, the U.S. EPA, under the Nationally, the U.S. EPA, under the Obama administration, estimated that the rule provided about $80 billion in public health benefits and a cost to the industry of only about $9.6 billion per year. As Councilman Remy mentioned, AEP Ohio is already on track to meet these standards, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense to go backwards even when the industry is some of the leaders in meeting these standards. By standing against these proposed changes to the MATS rule, Columbus City Council will be standing up for its most vulnerable residents and standing for a transition towards clean renewable energy that not only brings health benefits but can create jobs in the state of Ohio, adding to a clean energy industry with over 100,000 people employed today. The Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund thanks you for your time, President Harden, and once again, we enthusiastically support the passage of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Demeter. I would like to have the students introduce themselves. Tell us what year you're in and what your major is, if you wouldn't mind.
My name is Ava Lewis. I am a third-year Evolution Ecology and Organismal Biology student.
My name is Thomas Miller. I am a graduating senior studying public management, leadership, and policy.
My name is Alden Shepherd. In May, I will graduate with my BA in Strategic Communication and Public Policy, and then in August, I will go back to OSU to pursue my Master's of Public Administration at the John Glenn School of Public Affairs.
My name is Dana Jackson, and I'm a fourth-year Environmental Policy and Decision-Making student.
My name is Lily Rayco, and I'm a third-year economics student.
My name is Jaclyn DeVald. I'm a first year, and I'm studying psychology and environmental policy and decision-making.
Thank you so much for your advocacy. This is obviously very important, not just to people here in the city of Columbus, but obviously nationwide. And so, we really appreciate your advocacy, bringing this to our attention, and giving us the research that we use to prepare this resolution today. It was certainly helpful, and it means a lot to myself and my colleagues. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this afternoon? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Now I'd like to invite Danielle Chastain, her parents, Commissioner Carl and Letitia Chastain, her brother Cameron, and Boys and Girls Club of Columbus CEO Rebecca Asmo to the podium as I introduce 0110X 2019 to honor, recognize, and celebrate Danielle Chastain on being named the 2019 Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus. For nearly 70 years, the Youth of the Year program has honored and celebrated the nation's most inspiring teens and their incredible journeys. Danielle Chastain spent the last several months competing against other outstanding teens for the Youth of the Year title. Delivering a self-written speech on her vision for American youth, Danielle fielded questions from a panel of judges on a variety of topics that were reflective of her hopes, dreams, and club experience. Understanding the great privilege of representing the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus, Danielle hopes that this award will allow her to give back to both the organization and her community. Danielle will be moving on to compete the Regional Youth of the Year competition in April and will have the opportunity to attend the National Youth Leadership Academy in June. Danielle speaks of a vision where more youth connect with one another and stay in clubs, as well as the need for more places in the community where teens can positively engage with each other. As winner of the Youth of the Year, Danielle will represent the voice and spirit of hope for America and will inspire all kids to lead, succeed, and inspire. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby honor, recognize, and celebrate Danielle Chastain on being named the 2019 Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus and for her contributions to our great city. Danielle, Carl, Letitia, Rebecca, the floor is now yours.
Well, first off, I wanted to say thank you, President Harden, and City Councilmember Remy, for having me here today. It's a great honor and a great opportunity that you guys gave me today. I never would have thought or saw myself being here in city council, like, ever. Like, it's kind of nerve-wracking for me today. But then, I also want to give a big thanks to Boys and Girls Club of Columbus, preferably our CEO, Ms. Rebecca, our teen center manager, Ms. Jacquez, and then also my club director for UA Metro Boys and Girls Club, Ms. Lacy, for giving me the opportunity and also help and guidance for National Youth of the Year for our state championships. And then, yeah. But yeah, it's really exciting. I will be going for my regional championship in Perrysburg, Ohio, April 5 through the 6, and will be competing against other club members in Ohio and then also other club members in Michigan as well.
Anybody else want to say anything? Certainly, you want to say something, Ms. Asmo?
Just, I wanted to say Eva.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. Thank you, all of the family, for your service. I know you're a commissioner in the Far East Area Commission. Commission Chair Ava Johnson is here in support, and certainly, we applaud your efforts and your accomplishments in doing so, so congratulations. Sure. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. What grade are you in?
I am in the 11th grade.
And what school do you attend?
I go to Metro Early College High School.
Okay. And so, tell me a little bit about your future plans.
So, my future plans, I've already decided on a few of my colleges that I wanted to attend to, which consist of University of Pittsburgh, OSU, or St. Louis, the College of Pharmacy, and I plan to pursue, to get my Farm D in pharmacy.
And how long have you been involved in Boys and Girls Clubs?
I have been involved in Boys and Girls Club for about six, seven years, so since I was about 12.
Thank you. Well, I want to say, first of all, congratulations to you, to the family, congratulations, and certainly for allowing your daughter to be in a great program like the Boys and Girls Club. And to Rebecca, I, again, thank you for your leadership. It is so important for our young boys and girls to be in programs like the Boys and Girls Club, and especially, you've had the opportunity to be identified as a leader already, and that you have, you are, you know, you've won the Youth of the Year. And so, congratulations, just congratulations to you. It's just, it's very impressive, and it just goes to the point that when we're looking at our Commission on Black Girls, how important it is for girls to be in programs like this. So, congratulations. I wish you the best as you continue to move forward. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Congratulations. Finally, this evening, I'd like to announce our next Community Hours, which will be April 4th, that's a Thursday, at Einstein Brothers at 6700 Sawmill Road, from 12 to 1:30. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one resolution. It's Resolution 111X-2019. I'm going to ask Lisa Hobson and Teresa Woodard on behalf, to accept this resolution on behalf of the Franklin Youth Garden, and Karima Samaldi will represent the Franklin County Local Food Action Council, and Ernest Perry will represent the Columbus Franklin County Food Board, if you all walk towards the podium. It's Beth, the whole group can come up. And she'll Lisa Dawkins. And I'm just going to read just a portion of the resolution, and then I'm going to have Karima speak on this particular resolution, certainly Ernest Perry, the president of the Columbus Franklin County School, Franklin County Food Board, to speak also. So, this resolution is to recognize and to celebrate the Highland Youth Garden on being named the inaugural March of 2019, the Local Food Action Plan Local Food Champion Winner by the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board and the Franklin County Local Food Council. And whereas a local food champion's work embodies one or each of the goals outlined in the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan, which goals are A, B, and C, and D include enhancing the coordination and communication among existing food resources and agencies, improving access to and education about healthy food and affordable food and local food, and enhancing, increasing the role of food in economic development and preventing food waste. And whereas the City of Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board was established to oversee and prioritize and guide implementation of the activities of the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan. And so, and this inaugural award is going to the Highland Youth Garden. And I don't know who wants to speak first, but is it, okay, Ernest Perry. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Harden, other members of council. My name is Ernest Perry, and today I stand and represent my colleagues on the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board, and we're honored to recognize the Highland Youth Garden as the first recipient of the Local Food Champion Award. Thank you for recognizing the Highland Youth Garden. Highland Youth Garden has a decade of providing access and education through their local food system efforts on the Hilltop. It's important to the Food Board that we have partners like the Highland Youth Garden to help us achieve our goals. We would not be successful without them, and so we are honored to count the Highland Youth Garden as the inaugural recipient of the Local Food Champions Award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Good afternoon, President Harden, and members of the City Council. As an entity that provides to support the implementation of the Local Food Action Plan, the Franklin County Local Food Council is delighted to assist the Local Food Board in identifying deserving grassroots community efforts that support the work of the plan. Highland Youth Garden was selected because they exhibit notable efforts to remove barriers to accessing healthy food for our most vulnerable populations and provide educational efforts that reflect the desire to inspire healthy lifestyle changes. They engage the community with a collaborative approach by enabling the children to help plan activities, including the produce that will be grown in the garden. We thank the Highland Youth Garden for their inspiring work to uplift the Hilltop community.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and President Harden, and the rest of council. I truly appreciate this award and the recognition for what we're doing on the Hilltop. It's 500 students a year that get to come through our garden, that get to learn about the garden, and I was just here a couple weeks ago, so I won't repeat everything I said a couple weeks ago, except for April 17, please come out. That's our first community celebration. We'll be having Chef Jim from OSU there, so it'll be a good celebration. We've still got lots of spinach in the high tunnel that we've been growing all year. There's lots of pak choi, and you'll get to meet our after-school program as well. They've been doing worms. You might get to learn about worms. So, thank you very much for this honor.
Well, thank you, and you're so deserving of this award. And again, I want to thank this partnership with the Franklin County Local Food Council as well as our Food Board, and congratulations, again, to the Highland Youth Garden. And the only other point I want to make, those 500 children that come through that garden come from that community, from Highland Elementary and the Columbus Bilingual Academy during the school year, and they also, during the school year and during the summer, provide food and opportunities for youth to participate in the Westgate Farmer's Market. So, congratulations on your 10 years of serving the community, and congratulations on being our first Local Food Action Champion. Thank you. I move for passage. Adoption. Thank you.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
I will be holding, the Health and Human Services Committee will have a hearing this week, two hearings this week, on the human service organizations recommended for funding under the 2019 Human Services Grant Program. The hearing is an opportunity for the organizations to present how they will use those awarded funds. The first will be on Wednesday, March 27, starting at 3:00 p.m. in council chambers. The second, part two of those hearings will be Thursday, March 28, at 3:00 o'clock. Anyone is invited to offer public testimony. Comments are limited to three minutes. Of course, those wishing to address the council on this matter will fill out a speaker slip no later than 3:00 p.m. on the day of those hearings, and they will be broadcast on CTV. So, again, please come out, and we're looking forward to hearing from all the organizations that are, that have gone through the human services competitive process to share with us how they're going to use those dollars. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Before we move forward with council, I wanted to take a moment to pay homage and to pass on our condolences to two giants in our community. One, Dr. Charles Edward Booth, who passed over the weekend, and the other is Ms. Amber Evans, who was confirmed passing as well. Both of these folks led our community in very different ways. Both represented different generations but fought for the same people. Both left a gaping hole in our community, and both will sorely be missed. Wanted to open it up for a second, just if any of the council members had any comments about any of these two folks, and then ask us all to stand for a quick moment of silence to remember these leaders. With that, please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any other comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? I see Ms. Ava Johnson is here, or was here, as well as Ms. Doreen Yassauer. Welcome to council. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolutions from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee, ordinance 718-2019. Recreation Parks Committee, ordinance 720-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 641, 645, 667, 675, 701, 770, and 771-2019. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 773-2019. And Zoning Committee, ordinance 809-2019.
Looks like we have one speaker on our first reading portion of the agenda. It's Alton Henry, speaking on ordinance 0641-2019. Mr. Henry, welcome to council. Would you please state your name, your address, and the organization you may represent?
Yes, good evening, President Harden and council members. My name is Alton Henry. I'm a member of Bread Organization, which is located at 404 South 3rd Street. I’m a member of Bread Organization, which is located at 404 South Third Street. I’m glad this city is diligent about preserving the infrastructure within our community. However, we’d like to see the city doing even more in the area of what is really called affordable housing. I’d like to share with you my story this evening. For the past 12 years, I’ve been selling residential appliances in the city to builders in Columbus, Ohio, and surrounding areas. I’ve been a part of selling appliances to multifamily housing, which is really booming in this city, and they run anywhere for one, for one-bedroom apartments approximately $1,400 a month for a one-bedroom apartment, which is $16,800 a year to over $2,000 a month for two bedrooms. My question is, how much do you have to make a month to live in any of these places? And do you call this affordable housing? The other scenario that I’m involved with as well in dealing with builder distributors is that, which is personal, my son lived on the south side of Columbus, Ohio. He and his fiance was living in a house that the landlord gave them two to four months to move because the place had just been purchased by a private landlord. Thank God, they were fortunate enough to be able to find a place to move to. But what about the others who aren’t able or can’t find a place and then possibly find themselves to be homeless? I sold appliances in that same area to builders who rehabbed those houses and, of course, sold them more to people from other areas of the city. My wife works with a coworker in Worthington who bought one of those houses and lives down there, along with probably people who work at Nationwide Hospital as well as other jobs that are located there. And we’re talking about three to four-bedroom houses that are going, that was sold to my son for $800 a month, that’s now being sold approximately $1,600 a month. I know things like these occurred in larger cities because my daughter lived in Chicago for a year and a half for a nonprofit organization. And what transpired is that she’s lived there in inner-city Chicago. And what transpired within that year and a half, she saw people who she interacted with all of a sudden being, losing their housing and being moved. And we all know what that’s called, correct? Gentrification. And my hope is that-
You can finish that thought, sir.
This doesn’t occur here in Columbus. My last comment is this, if you don’t mind, is this. You know, this is the brand for our city. Let’s remember the us in Columbus. Us includes all of us, for those who have opportunity, who live in houses and may have an opportunity to lose their houses and not get affordable housing. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, for your advocacy. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 102X, 103X, 104, 105, 107, 108, and 109X-2019. Finance Committee, ordinance is 526, 666, 698, 713, 716, 722, 725-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 390, 752, 794-2019. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 572 and 679-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 222 and 705-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 77X-2019. Ordinance is 609, 740, and 741-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 543-2019. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 756, 765, 801, 818-2019. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 704-2019.
Looks like we have two speakers on the consent action portion of the agenda. The first speaker is Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 0609-2019.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, as a resident of North London. I would like to see more money for the sidewalks in South London, North London, and the Near East Side. Question for $978, $750, and 78 cents. I just would like to know what the timeframe of this is going to be completed and what’s the time factors of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director.
So, this is to award the contract to the contractor, so he’ll have a notice to proceed in about 90 days, so that work will be completed this year, this construction year.
Thank you. Is this the program that Councilmember Remy and Brown championed last year?
No, that is for sidewalks around schools. This is the one where we’re filling in gaps in the different neighborhoods in relation to Celebrate One program.
Got it. Thank you so much. The next speaker on the consent agenda is Reverend John Cox. Reverend Cox, welcome to council. Reverend Cox is speaking on ordinance 01, 01, 02X-2019.
President Harden, members of council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I want to begin to congratulate Mayor Andrew J. Ginther as the 2019 Community Leadership Award recipient. Congratulations for that. My name is Reverend John Cox. I am a member of Bread. I live at 1816 Red Robin Road in Columbus, Ohio, 43229. I lived in that apartment. I’ve been back in the States. I was in the UK for 17 years, and I came back to the States, I’m from Cincinnati, to serve at Carl Road Christian Church. So, I wanted to live somewhere in the area close by, and having not been in the area for 17 years, my credit was not, was non-existent, even though I had a driver’s license and a passport and all those things, and a birth certificate about being born in Cincinnati. So, I had trouble with, with getting a bank account, and we talked about that with the ID. But I’ve also had difficulties with, with housing, because if you don’t have credit, you can’t really get housing. You can rent, but they want you to have some proof that you have some income. Fortunately, my wife and I both work, and we’re able to do that. We work at a church. It’s, it’s, it’s not a mega church, it’s just a little church in the community, and so they don’t have a whole lot of money, but they’re able to help me be able to have affordable housing. But it brought up to me the importance of that issue among people who are not as fortunate as I am. And I want to make sure that we, we do what we can to, to make that a non-issue in Columbus. And we’re glad to know that Mayor Ginther is taking initial steps with the ballot initiative and the land trust. Research shows that more funding is needed to address our housing crisis. Increased funding from the general fund budget seems to be more sustainable, and Bread wants to share stories about what’s happening when we come before you. Encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families that make less than $42,000 a year, and give an additional $5 million per year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then the question is, what will it take for the city to grant these requests? Everybody deserves to have a place to live that’s safe and dry and warm and free of little rodents that love to come in when it’s cold outside. Everybody deserves a nice place to live in this wonderful country. So, I, I just place that before you, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Pastor, and again, thank you for your advocacy. We look forward to working with you, with Bread, and with all of the community as we stack hands to address this affordable housing issue that we are facing in our, in our community. Thank you. Of course, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden, and certainly, I know that we are locking hands in our city to certainly trying to ensure that individuals have an opportunity to be in safe and decent housing. But again, I, I think that when you look at the role that, again, the federal government plays, we, I think there has to be that work there. I’ve noticed that, you know, the home money has been decreased by 35%. The community development dollars have gone down 34%. The funding for persons with disability have gone down by 33%. The public fund, public housing operation fund, 17%. Housing for, for the elderly, 28%. And public housing capital fund has gone down by 4%. And so, we really do need to, it needs to be a state, a local state, and a federal effort. When I look at the federal dollars, that in about 1975, we didn’t have a significant homeless issue, but we, there was $120 billion, $120 billion to support, to support affordable housing. That number now is down to about $47 billion. So, you’re missing, so about $73 billion is gone. So, it’s a, it’s a big issue. We are certainly want to do our part, but it’s going to require a number of individual, a number of organizations coming together to deal with this significant issue.
Yeah. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Those are very good points, and it’s also, it’s a regional issue. This is not just a City of Columbus issue. It’s a Worthington, it’s a Dublin, it’s a Westerville. I mean, it is not, it’s certainly a nationwide issue. It’s not something that the City of Columbus can bear the burden on their back, so, on our back solely. So, we need to be working together with all of our partners throughout the region, the state, and the federal level to try to address these needs. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you both for those comments, and thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I know at the National League of Cities, this is an effort that Councilmember Tyson and many others are leaning into for federal advocacy. Look forward to the leadership of Councilmember Favors and all of those as we move this issue forward. For those of you who are wondering, the air is on. It should be cool around zoning committees, so. Seeing no further comments on the consent action portion of the agenda, may I get a motion for approval? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
The consent agenda portion carries. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we have ordinance 0697-2019 to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish purchase orders from universal term contracts for the purchase of pursuit vehicles for the Division of Police and Battalion Chief and Emergency Medical Services Vehicles for the Division of Fire with statewide Ford Lincoln, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $1,640,326.64 from the Special Income Tax Fund, and to declare an emergency. The vehicles being purchased through this ordinance include 37 pursuit SUVs and one K-9 vehicle for the Division of Police, and six Battalion Chief and Emergency Medical Services Vehicles for the Division of Fire. They will replace current vehicles that have significant maintenance costs due to heavy use and high mileage. Emergency action is being considered, so there’s no interruption in the use of the vehicles. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
We also have ordinance 0744-2019 to authorize the city auditor to modify the existing contracts with Tyler Technologies Incorporated and Microsoft Corporation, and provide funding for the support, hosting, and maintenance of Dynamics AX, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to $1,284,805 from the Special Income Tax Fund, for a total expenditure of $1,284,805, and to declare an emergency. Dynamics AX is the financial management system used by the city. It’s manufactured by Microsoft, and maintenance and support are provided by Tyler Technologies. This ordinance provides funding for the second year of an authorized contract extension. During the two-year contract, the Finance Department and city auditor have been evaluating updated financial management software called Dynamics 365. An RFP was released for an upgrade project, and the city is currently waiting for responses to this competitive bidding process. Once responses are received and a contractor is selected, new legislation will be submitted to authorize the contract, contract for this upgrade project. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to Recreation and Parks, Council President?
Please.
Thank you. Next, in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 0763-2019 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement for the period of March 21st, 2019, through March 20th, 2020, with the Community Arts Project Incorporated, doing business as the King Arts Complex, to provide financial support toward community arts programming, facility operations, and maintenance, to authorize the expenditure of $125,000 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Recreation and Parks Department began their partnership with the King Arts Complex in 1992, when they began leasing the Garfield School from the city. Since then, the Columbus has been, Columbus overall has benefited from the cultural and arts programming offered at, at the school. This agreement extends the partnership to provide arts programming at the Garfield School through 2019, and the ordinance also provides financial support for the operation and maintenance of the facility. Emergency action is considered so that operation and maintenance can continue uninterrupted. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
There are two more ordinances in Recreation and Parks that Councilmember Brown will read, but may I read a rules and reference ordinance first?
Sure, let’s finish up.
Rules and reference, ordinance 0520-2019, to amend section 913.02 of the city code to grant the Director of Recreation and Parks the authority to authorize third-party vendors to conduct commercial activity in City of Columbus-controlled waterways via written permission for the rental of canoes, kayaks, paddleboards, and similar vessels, and to declare an emergency. The goal of this code revision is to expand the number of vendors available to residents who are interested in running paddlecraft on city-operated waterways, primarily the downtown pool of the Syota River. This is a companion piece to an ordinance passed by city council two weeks ago. Emergency action is being considered to ensure that adequate time is available to finalize policies with input from vendors and city attorney’s office, so that boating can begin as early as possible with the advent, we hope, of imminently warmer weather. I want to thank the Recreation and Parks Department again for their hard work on this. Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
That’s all I have tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Next committee to come before council is the Veterans Affairs, Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee, as well as, we’re going to finish up in Recreation Park. Those committees will be chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight I have two pieces of legislation, and there’s one is a companion piece. I have ordinance 0669-2019 to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $197,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to the Recreation and Parks Department for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, in connection with the Senior Farmer’s Market Nutrition Program, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown?
My voice, sorry.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dorans?
Yes.
Favor? Remy?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance carries.
Thank you, Council President. Also, I have ordinance 0671-2019 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter to a contract with Life Care Alliance for the Senior Farmer’s Market Nutrition Program, to authorize the expenditure of up to $197,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Life Care Alliance administers the Senior Farmer’s Market Nutrition Program on behalf of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging. In addition to funding from the City of Columbus, this program also receives funding from the United States Department of Agriculture with add- United States Department of Agriculture with additional support from the Franklin County Office on Aging. The program, which runs from June 1st through October 31st annually, provides vouchers for seniors to redeem with local organized markets, including the North Market in various Central Ohio counties, approximately 5,500 individuals are expected to receive vouchers. I do have a speaker slip on this legislation, sir, if I may.
Please.
Mr. and Madam Ruth Jarvis. Would you please state your full name and any organization you represent, and you have three minutes.
I'm Ruth Elaine Jarvis, and I thank you for allowing me to come down and talk to the council today, tonight. My name is Ruth Jarvis. I am a member of the BRED organization located at 404 South Third Street. I'm glad that the council is making a decision today to, on this issue. There are many seniors who depend on the services of Life Care Alliance and the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. Here's my story. I receive SSI and SSD. I live in a safe, decent neighborhood that I really love in Reynoldsburg, Ohio, but the rent is too high. By the end of the month, I don't have enough money left to afford anything else, and after, without food stamps, I wouldn't be able to afford food. I tried to get a job in order to support myself, but I found out that I would be able, that I would be over my benefits. That shouldn't be so. It's time to take a good look at this even more seriously and to do something that can help people like myself so that we'll be able to afford safe, decent housing. This is a countywide problem, and that is why I came here tonight from Reynoldsburg to share my story. There are not enough solutions in place to affect the 54,000 low-income households targeted by the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. We're glad to know that Mayor Ginther is taking initial steps with the ballot infected, initiative, sorry, and the Land Trust. Research shows that more funding is needed to address our housing crisis. Increased funding from more, from the general fund budget seems to be more sustainable. BRED wants the city to encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families that make less than $42,000 a year and give an additional, I'm sorry, $5 million per year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So my question tonight to you, city council, is what will it take for the city to grant these requests?
Ms. Jarvis, thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate your concerns. We're certainly sensitive to all of them. The legislation that we're passing tonight addresses one issue. There are multiple issues that need to be looked at, and I can assure you that this council will do all it can to continue to look at those issues.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's big situations, big. Many of people other than myself are really, you know, having to fight almost for being able to live and support ourselves, so.
Well, thank you again for coming down. Any comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move, Council President, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and just to add to your comments on the importance of the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, you mentioned that 5,500 individuals are expected to receive those vouchers and that it is so important because we do want to make sure that our seniors have access to healthy food, affordable food and local food, and this is what this does. But also the importance of, you know, I talk about these partnerships that we have to have to be able to do this work, and the USDA is a partner of the, with us, and they've been a partner with us for a period of time, the last three years, it's about, for about $580,000. And I also just want to recognize the USDA for, there's a lot of initiatives that they're, they're funding in this, in this community to provide access to people to be able to have the food. And so we did not have that, there'd even be a different conversation here. So we need to continue to grow those partnerships with the federal government to help our community. And so I thank you for this legislation and the partnership that we're having with USDA.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and again, thank you for the Department of Recreation and Parks. I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Please call the roll by voice, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dorans?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Yes, ordinance passed.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities Committee, we have one piece of legislation. That's ordinance number 649-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a, to a construction contract with Shelley &amp; Sons, Inc. for the Union Avenue Area Waterline Improvement Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,548,001.62 from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $3,548,001.62 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $2 million within the Water General Obligation Voted Bond Funds, to provide for the payment of prevailing wage services to Department of Public Service for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 capital improvements budget. The goal of this project is to replace or rehabilitate the existing six and eight-inch water lines in this area that have a high break frequency. The replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease the burden on the water maintenance operations and reduce water loss in the Hilltop neighborhood. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have in the Public Utilities Committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have ordinance number 730-2019. It's to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health and to authorize the appropriations of $1,500,000 to grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriate balance of the Health Department Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is for the Women's Health and Wellness Center at Columbus Public Health, provides reproductive health services for women, men, teens, and particularly residents that are low-income and without health insurance. These services include a special focus on providing highly effective and long-term birth control methods as a part of the overall strategy to promote safe birth spacing and support infant mortality reduction strategies. Columbus Public Health serves as a lead agency in Franklin County for this program. In 2018, there were 5,049 visits completed. This represents a 27 increase over the 2,017 total visits. 627 long-acting reversible contraceptive methods utilized, up 18 percent, and 610 visits, up 64 percent, and 380 male visits, up 223 percent. We focus on the well-women exam and preventive health care, PAP, HPV testing and referral for mammograms, management of gynecological conditions, preconception health services and reproductive life plans, screening for tobacco use along with prevention for tobacco cessation, social service linkages, including assistance with health enrollment and community outreach and education. So it certainly is a program that is very important into, in terms of the reproductive health and wellness of our men, women and children in our community. If you are in need of any of the services that I just read off, you can please contact our Nurse Jo Taylor directly at 614-645-3569. And if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. There's no further business coming for council, may I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. I'm going to go straight. We have three speakers on non-agenda, let's, I'm going to go ahead into the speaker portion. First speaker to come before council is Mr. Willis Brown. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular meeting number 15 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
We will slowly through this change, go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 721-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3332.29 Height District, and 3353.05 D4 C2 District Development Limitations of the Columbus C codes, were properly located at 234 South Napoleon Avenue, to permit a monopole telecommunications antenna with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Echo Site, Inc., care of Attorney David Hodge. Proposed use is a monopole telecommunications antenna. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The mid, mid-east area community collaboratives' recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 723-2019 to rezone 6932 Shock, Shock Road, being 14.77 acres located on the east side of Shock Road, 190 feet, feet north of Rick and Barker Parkway West from the R Rule District to the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Crawford-Holing Development Partners, care of Nelson Yoda. The proposed use is industrial use. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Far South, Far South Air Commission's recommendation is approval, eight to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for, move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Oh. Oh, he didn't submit it. All right. Well, we do have one speaker who is for this legislation, is Mr. Aaron Newman. Oh, I'm sorry, this is, oh, this is the next one. Thank you. Okay. So this one I move for passage, which, thank you.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and the, the final piece of legislation in zoning is 742-2019. It's to rezone 6580 Sawmill Road, being .95 acres located at the east side of Sawmill Road, 68 feet south of I-270, from the LC4 Limited Commercial District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Pet Palace and its care of Attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a pet daycare grooming kennel. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far Northwest Coalition's recommendation is approval, seven to zero. I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening, council. The site consists of a single parcel developed with a commercial building zoned in the LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant proposes the LM Limited Manufacturing District to allow C4 district uses, including pet daycare and related uses. The limitation text establishes use restrictions in manufacturing district development standards and the regional commercial overlay RCO graphic standards. In conjunction with this rezoning, the applicant has filed a Board of Zoning Adjustment Variance and Special Permit Application to permit outdoor animal runs and to reduce the required number of parking and loading spaces in the building setback. The site is subject to the Sawmill Road RCO and is within the planning area of the Northwest Plan, which recommends commercial uses at this location. Staff supports limited uses at this area as the proposal is consistent with the Northwest Plan and compatible with the commercial development along the Sawmill Road corridor. For these reasons, staff recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council colleagues? Seeing none. Mr. Brown, any comments?
I believe the speaker slipped in his favor of the application. I don't think it's stated, council has questions, can I?
Thank you. We have any questions? All right, we have one speaker that is for this legislation, Mr. Aaron Newman. Please come to the podium, you have three minutes, and state who you represent.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Aaron Newman. I live at 8844 Atherton Road, president of the Far Northwest Coalition of Columbus, President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, Chairperson Tyson and all members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to help close the day's agenda by speaking in support of rezoning 6850 Sawmill Road to allow the applicant Pet Palace, a growing local company with satisfied little four-legged clients across central Ohio, to open what I believe is their second Columbus location in the far northwest. The FNWC Board unanimously recommended the application for approval after holding open public meetings to solicit feedback and after working with the applicant to include plans to remove trees that would be lost to construction to other more prominent parts of the property that we believe will in fact improve the aesthetics of the immediate area, including the heavily trafficked I-270 Sawmill interchange. We always welcome new development in the far northwest with strategic rezoning when needed that revitalizes and enhances our commercial districts, such as the Columbus side of Sawmill, offers jobs and services to our residents and draws customers not only from Columbus, but most likely from neighboring Dublin and Powell as well. And we certainly appreciate applicants who work with our board and residents to resolve those differences that can be resolved and find compromises that improve the overall community. And so we welcome Pet Palace to the neighborhood and look forward to seeing lots of happy cats and well-groomed dogs on walks across the far northwest soon. Thank you again to the members of council for your time and your consideration of the Coalition's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Newman, for your leadership from the Far Northwest Coalition and working with the owners of Pet Palace and I'm sure the attorney, Mr. Jeffrey Brown. So thank you. Are there any questions for, for Mr. Newman?
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you. Seeing none, I first move to mental emergency.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and I, finally, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and that's all I have in the zoning committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business in the zoning committee, may I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Reeny, Tyson, President Harden.
Have a good evening.